Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, to order. It is 6:31. Would you please stand for the invocation by Pastor Bob's, uh, Robert Stope from the Impact Christian Church and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Regard it Father, a privilege to gather together tonight to conduct the business of this town. God, I pray your blessings upon those men and women who have assembled here for that distinct responsibility. Again, I pray for they have wisdom and knowledge and insight into that which will benefit this community. And Father, we pray for our community tonight. We pray for the children, for the, uh, for the families, for the senior citizens. We pray for peace. We thank you, Lord, for those who provide peace and protect us. Lord, we rejoice in who you are and what you've given us and we thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Here.
Councilwoman Barron? Councilman Pettit?
Here.
Councilwoman Lamarcus? Councilman Hardaway?
Here.
We have five present. We have a quorum, uh, petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Uh, first thing is I'd like to congratulate the Andrian High School football team for winning the crossroads, the Northwest Crossroads Conference Championship outright this year. Great job by Coach Skinner and his staff. Uh, Mrs. Shai?
Yes.
You have something to read?
Yes. October 23rd, 2018, compliance letter. Z11UV3, March of 2018. Dennis K. and Martha A. Coleman, 6371 Vermont Street. Dear Town Council members, on March 28th, 2018, Dennis and Martha Coleman petitioned the border zoning appeals to allow a boarding house to be located at 6371 Vermont Street in a R2 residential zoning district. The border zoning appeals denied the petition. On April 20, on April 10th, 2018, the Town Council denied the petition and the petitioner was given six months to relocate the individuals that lived in the house. Attached is the copy of a building inspection that was completed by our building inspector, Dan Brown, on September 25th, 2018. The house is now empty. Homeowners plan to move into the house and make the home their primary residence. Sincerely, Sheila Shai, building director.
Anyone have any questions on what was just read? Quite sure we're all familiar with it, Roxanne, it's your award. And, uh, we'd like, we'd like to thank staff for, uh, sticking with that and then reminding us again today that everything's in compliance and we can, uh, come up with our next whatever. Uh, consent agenda for Counciltable Registered Voucher for October 23rd along with the approval of Town Council Meeting Minute for October 9th, 2018. Motion by Councilwoman Usalak, second by Councilwoman Pettit, that we approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Um, Standing Committees, Budget and Finance, Councilman Pettit?
No report.
Uh, Public Works, does anybody have anything under Public Works in Councilman Minchuck's absence?
Yes, I have the approval of the LPA consultant contract for the multi-agency emergency vehicle preemption project. Uh, the contract is for, with this, uh, Robinson Engineering, it's for $364,945. Uh, this is 90-10 money, 10% is going to be coming from the seven local communities who have partnered together for this. Um, so our percentage, or that, I'm sorry, our part of that 10%, at a percentage of 30%, is going to, where did I put my sticky note? $11,065 is what our true cost would be.
Motion to approve, Mr. President, the second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Spann, that we have approved the, uh, the, the letter, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, anything else under Public Works? I see that the leaf collection has started.
Uh, yes, it started yesterday and as usual, unfortunately, a lot of the leaves are still up in the trees, so, um, they'll, they'll be down soon, we'll get them.
Did everyone get the email about the, the person that asked about the limb pickup?
I did.
Did you, Rich, saw that as well?
I did.
What, what's our status, Bruce, when they do leaf collection with limbs?
Well, it, what we've done in the past, just in general, you know, we always do a spring cleanup that includes all branches and leaves and whatever. Now, depending upon the size of the storm, we've been known to go out and just, yeah, spur of the moment. We went through the town a couple of weeks ago, spur of the moment, because we had a few bad storms and we went through and we picked anything up that was in the right of way. We picked up two weeks ago. So I'm not sure what this lady's, uh, beef is with the town, but we, we were out.
Wasn't he rich?
We, we, yeah, I, I, I got that. And, and the issue is though, when we do leaf pickup-
It's a vacuum, I understand.
No, no, but what we do is, we've done this before and we've learned the hard way that if we make promises we can't keep, which is picking up branches, there's times that we're barely getting the leaves picked up before a heavy snowstorm. And one year, I think the branches didn't get picked up till February. So we don't make that promise anymore and we encourage everyone to take them up to our north facility.
Well, I, I think there's a couple of options too. One of the options is just putting them in your trash can and, uh, Waste Management will pick them up.
Right.
You know, unless you have, and the part of the garbage, you could just, it seemed like she had that many.
Yeah.
And it also, you know, I, I, I don't want to be difficult, but it just seemed like she's not paying attention to what's going on, because the newsletter states that, you know, no limbs. So if that's what, if that's what it is, then send it us an email saying that, I want my branches picked up, never gonna happen. So, thank you. Anything else under Public Works? Council Affairs, Councilwoman Lamarcus?
No report.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, uh, anybody have anything, uh, in Councilwoman Barron's chapters? Public Safety, Councilwoman Usalak?
Uh, yes, I believe, uh, Bruce has got a report about a lease regarding the fire station on 72nd and Taffel. Is that it?
Right, it's the, it's the station, it's, uh, the infill station on Taff Street. Um, this may seem like deja vu, because we did one just like this a little over a year ago for, uh, Station 74, which is the one at 57th and Harrison. Uh, this lease mirrors the same thing we did at 57th and Harrison with Superior to rent out a small portion of the station and it's actually the same amount, which is $36,000 a year and that money would go back to, um, the fire territory. Uh, the, excuse me, the lease was approved by the Territory Board, but because it was over $25,000, it also has to be approved by both, uh, the Ross Township Board and the Town Council. The attached is, the Ross Township had already approved and signed that part of it.
They're reciprocal leases as from the Township and from, and to the Town Council, so.
Need a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay, I second that.
Motion by Council, by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilwoman Usalak, that we have approved the, uh, lease agreement with Superior in the fire territory, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Anything else under Public Safety?
I had, uh, one thing. Uh, the officers are back participating in MIS with Lunch with the Cop every Tuesday and Thursday, so they're trying to mingle, uh, with the children and, uh, make friends and, you know, every cop's not a bad cop, they're just trying to, uh, get associated with the children again. And so between hours of 11 and 1, you'll see an officer up at MIS for a short period of time mingling with the kids. Uh, right now, the police department's been in negotiation, uh, with the Maryville Community School Corporation. They have a second re, uh, school resource officer, uh, for next year after the first of the year, hopefully just, uh, attend to the two middle schools, which have been busy.
Thank you. Yeah, that sounds good. Glad that that's working out.
And the principal had come up with this idea at MIS, I believe her name is Mrs., uh-
Mrs. Carol, uh, Bono.
Yes, she's participating.
Yeah, she's, she's a good lady, she's doing- Anything else under Public Safety? Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus?
Uh, yes, I have a motion to make, um, concerning the community center project and the land we're trying to acquire for that. Um, it's a motion that the Town Council President be granted authority by this Town Council to enter in an addendum to purchase agreement pursuant to IC 36-1-10.5 concerning extending the due diligence period and closing date for 60 days as related to the following parcels, 6,700 Broadway, 6,600 Washington Street, 6,600 Broadway, and 6,535 Madison Street, and that the offer to purchase shall be contingent upon council appropriation of funds for purchase and to immediately engage the DVG team to provide an ALTO survey on the above-mentioned parcels in the amount not to exceed 2,700.
Is that all, um, vacant land?
It's the, uh, the land we're trying to acquire for the community center, the old Y&amp;W drive-in. They just need extra time, uh, to, uh, they're having issues with, um-
Yeah, there, there's been a situation where we received plats from the owner and we also recently received an ALTO, uh, uncompleted ALTO survey, which indicated that there were some utility easements running through the property. Uh, the seller is going to agree to clear those easements up before we acquire the property, because if we acquire the property with the easements there right now, that could substantially change, uh, where we locate buildings or how we do things and we really don't want to do that. So seller has agreed to clear up those easement issues. So that's what, uh, you are voting on tonight and also the approval or authority for the Town Council President, not only to enter into the addendum to the purchase agreement, but also engage DVG, who are, uh, surveyors and engineers, to go ahead and survey the property properly with an ALTO survey, so that we have all our paperwork in order for acquisition.
So we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I just need a motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion by Councilwoman Usalak, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve the, uh, the gen, the addendum to, uh, for me to sign, uh, the letter, uh, not to exceed $2,700. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, anything else under Parks and Rec?
Uh, yes, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Uh, we had some graffiti vandalism at Rosenbaum Park and thanks to Jen, our little chair park director, she got it cleaned up immediately and she invited me tonight, everything is cleaned up and it's all right.
Okay, good.
Okay.
We'll make sure we conduct actual patrols. I'll tell the officers.
We've got patrols out now?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you, Chief.
And Jen, do you have something?
Um, just to let everybody know, the Park Department is now planning the Santa Procession. It will take place on Friday, December 7th at 6:00 PM. The procession will start at MIS and work its way east on 61st to 57th and 57th to Presen Park.
What time was that, Jen?
Uh, 6:00 PM.
Six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And our fall schedule is in full force, uh, we're running classes, um, throughout the week sporadically, but we've picked up some night classes as well, so now we're running, um, Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays during the day and in the evening till about 8 o'clock. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Environment Affairs, Councilwoman Barron, Matt?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Elections, Public Relations, Councilwoman Usalak?
Uh, yes, we have absentee voting going on in the county, Lake County. Our election will be November the 6th, so if you're not registered, hurry, you still have time to get in an absentee, if you don't vote at your polling place.
Okay.
Mr. President, under Councilwoman Usalak's committee, uh, just a reminder that the Crossroads Gala, uh, which I've had the pleasure of chair for 15 years, is coming up on November 17th. Uh, we have purchased two tables, so, uh, any council members that want to go, uh, you can go crack at the seats and then, uh, if they're not filled, we'll offer them to Department Eds or, or Town employees. Uh, we give out Police Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, and the Educator of the Year, uh, at that annual, uh, event.
Thank you. Uh, Economic Development, Councilman Pettit?
Um, yes, Mr. President, briefly, because we've all heard about this in the paper all over the place, I had the pleasure of being on public radio this afternoon, uh, with regard to the white lodging, uh, development at I-65. Dino Yankee's, uh, presented this in front of the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce, which has 650 members. There were 175 people in attendance at Avalot Manor to hear the presentation that the Council and, and Plan Commission, um, has heard, uh, before. Uh, they seemed, everyone, again, seems to be on board. Uh, there are questions, the funding is obviously the biggest, uh, the biggest hurdle, so we'll continue to progress with that and, um, see how that plays out.
Thank you. Uh, Utility Liaison, Councilman Spann?
Yes, uh, over on, uh, 64th Avenue, we had a, um, a bunch of branches cut down by NIPSCO and, um, the homeowner pulled them out, put them on the sidewalk and Public Works came out and saved the day.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Public Works for that. Get up and go, they shredded them, put the shredder in everything, it was great. Got called praising Maryville.
Well, NIPSCO is supposed to do the whole town of Maryville and they haven't covered everything yet, so they must be in your ward now, right?
Well, I, I don't know where they're at, but they're not cleaning up, that's the-
No, because they said they will cut and it's up to the homeowner to carry it to the front of their-
Oh, he did, he did.
Okay.
He did.
If, if it's an emergency line clearance, they will cut and run. If it's routine line clearance, they will chip all the chippable branches, anything non-chippable, they will stack in fireplace line pieces.
Ground crews?
Yeah.
Well, I haven't heard them doing anything in the fourth ward yet.
Yeah, and, and it's Towns and Tree Service that's their contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're on Grand Boulevard.
Yeah.
Oh, they're on Grand Boulevard, okay.
Let's hope they go to the miracle.
Yeah.
And that's my prayer. Uh, abandoned, abandoned properties, a couple of things before we get to the first one. Uh, I had a conversation today with, uh, one of the flippers on, uh, that rehab houses here in town of Maryville and he gave me some very good news that, you know, a couple years ago, houses were selling for right around 145, 150,000 dollars, uh, once they were rehabbed. And he said that, uh, over your area, one sold for 205,000, uh, and now they're averaging 190,000, that the ones that are being rehabbed.
There was one that just flipped on 54th and Delaware, up your ward, sold for 100.
Yeah, they, they, they are selling and they, and the rehabbers, the, the great thing about it is that the rehabbers are, that are doing this, aren't looking to rehab them to rent them, they're looking to rehab them so that they can sell them. And anything from 185,000 to 205,000 now, because I, I look at, a couple of years ago, when I had a couple that were done, one sold for 150 and the other one sold for 145, and so that's a huge increase. And, you know, and I'm talking Turkey Creek now, that sold for 185, 190,000. So, uh, those guys are to be commended, because they are doing what they said they were going to do by just rehabbing them and selling them outright, so that we don't be, we're not saddled with trying to find out who the owner is to go after them once the property starts to deteriorate. So if you see any rehabbers out there working, just, uh, give them support, because they're, they're making us money. And it's a great thing for us. I was, I was really pleased when I heard that this afternoon. Okay, the next thing is-
Uh, Mr. President, I do have an announcement for the Town Council and all people in attendance tonight. Um, we've been dealing with a situation where we've been trying to, uh, acquire the Old Mill properties, uh, the three parcels, uh, for a couple of years now. Um, I have in my hands the three tax deeds which give us the acquisition of those parcels. I'd like to specifically thank, uh, Lake County Commissioner Kyle Allen, who's in the audience tonight. Mr. Allen, if you could please stand up. And also, we'd like to acknowledge Mr. Tim Brown from the Lake County Economic Development Commission. Uh, Mr., Commissioner Allen was vital in helping us acquire these properties and, and having staff make sure that they were, uh, you know, there for us constantly. Uh, Mr. Brown, of course, was able to secure us community black, uh, block grant monies, which are going to be used to improve the properties. So to both of you gentlemen, I thank you very much for all of your assistance and help, we really appreciate it. So we are, we are happy that this acquisition is now come to fruition and we will be evaluating and doing what we have to do on the property to clean it up. But again, I just wanted to give that good report to the Town Council.
Well, one of the things is that we will start asbestos abating tomorrow. Mr.?
Yes, that's correct. Um, our contractor, Ryan Construction, they have a sub who specializes in asbestos removal, um, they'll be in there tomorrow. Um, NIPSCO is, but I haven't heard anything different, but NIPSCO is scheduled to be in this week to, um, disconnect the gas, the electric and the water's already been disconnected. So utilities get disconnected, they can go in there Monday and start demo and by the week's out, we won't even know there was a building there unless there's a bunch of spread out black dirt.
Okay, go ahead, I know you got something.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm thankful, but I would give a cautionary tale to Karen and Chaz, that to property owners in the town of Maryville, this council enrichment committee is serious about the appearance of property and taking care of your property. Some people say it's a right, I think it's a privilege and you need to take care of your property and this is a sad state, that that building of historic significance fell into the ruin that it did. And we got the same thing, Caddy Corner. So Commissioner, Tim, I know you're talking to Joe, Caddy Corner at the Carriage House is going to be next on the agenda, so.
Commissioner Pettit, uh, we are already in communication with the county attorneys-
I got to be a commissioner, Kyle.
Commissioner, Councilman, I got too many Cs in the crowd tonight.
Congratulations.
Uh, Councilman, I just want to let you know that we are currently working with the county to make sure we go ahead and try to secure that property next, so.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to say that, uh, to echo what Councilman Pettit said, uh, my committee, we are diligently going after anything and, uh, you know, we have our blank meeting, uh, Thursday, there'll be some other things coming out of that meeting that I won't go into tonight, but, uh, we're excited about everything that's going on in the towns and we're going to continue to pursue. And again, from me, Commissioner Allen, Tim Brown, thank you guys both very much, because without your assistance, we wouldn't be making this announcement tonight. And if we were making it, we'd still be trying to figure out how we're going to pay for it. So, Tim, I really appreciate what you did, uh, sticking with us there and prolonging this thing, so we can get it done. Thanks, both of you. That concludes committee reports. Uh, general orders. First reading ordinance, ordinance number 18-24, ordinance reclassifying certain lands, also known as Heritage North Phase 5, in the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for zoning purposes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Usalak, that we approve ordinance 18-24 on first reading. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, all that I would ask is that we, um, after first reading, that we go ahead and we waive the rules and, uh, do this, do, do the second reading as well tonight, so we can get this, uh, project going.
Any discussion, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Spann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcus?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes, motion carries five to zero.
Mr. President, make a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance 18-24 on second reading.
Second.
You've got to speak up, huh?
Second that, sorry.
Pressure my gun.
It is second that.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we suspend the rules for ordinance 18-24. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. After we get through first reading, after we get to second.
Right there.
Uh, ordinance 18-25, an ordinance reclassifying certain land, also known as Heritage North Phase 6, in the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for zoning purposes.
So move.
Second. Motion by Council, but, Pettit, second by Councilwoman Spann, that we approve ordinance 18-25 on first reading. Any discussion? All, uh, roll call, please, thank you.
You think the Cubs were in the World Series, the way you're going so fast?
I'm not even worried about the World Series.
Okay, um, I know. Councilman, Councilman Spann?
Aye.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcus?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes, you forgot me?
No, it's at the end.
Motion to suspend, Mr. President, and read on second, ordinance 18-25.
Second that.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we suspend the rules for this 18-25. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, ordinance 18-26, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriate additional monies within the casino fund for the year 2018, not included in the current budget.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Usalak, that we approve ordinance 18-26 on first reading. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Spann?
Aye.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcus?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. That concludes first reading ordinances, second reading ordinances. Ordinance 18-24, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands, also known as Heritage North Phase 5, in the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for zoning purposes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Usalak, that we approve ordinance 18-24 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Of course, this is the second reading ordinance, uh, we'd like to open it up for public comment on ordinance 18-24. Any public comment on ordinance 18-24? Roll call.
Councilman Spann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcus?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Ordinance 18-25, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands, also known as Heritage North Phase 6, in the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for zoning purposes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve ordinance 18-25 on second reading. Any discussion? Of course, this is the second reading ordinance, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on ordinance 18-25? Any public comment on ordinance 18-25? Any public comment? Roll call.
Councilman Spann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcus?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. That concludes second reading ordinances, uh, resolution, Resolution 18-26, a resolution accepting and approving a lease agreement as associated with a portion of a certain town retention pond and all matters related thereto.
So move.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Usalak, second by Councilman Spann, that we approve Resolution 18-26. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, I'm going to declare a conflict of interest and abstain.
Okay. Uh, opposed? Motion carries with four, four, uh, and one abstention. Uh. I'm getting to you there.
Don't worry.
That concludes resolutions. Uh, BCA action, we have none?
All.
Big part?
No.
Thank you. Uh, old business, any old business? Any new business? Mr. Spires?
Yes, yes, we had a, we had a meeting, uh, myself, Mr. Hardaway, Matt Lake. And uh, Jan Orlich met with a representative from the twenty, twenty twenty census. Uh, that is right around the corner. Their concern is in their going into commit, into communities, seeing if that we could set up a, sort of like a citizens committee group. That would assist them in the actual uh, survey count. Uh, their issue isn't so much getting the information out. It's actually getting people to reply to the survey itself and that's where that committee comes into uh, effect. Um, and it could be done through like, I think she said, programs through churches, through the schools, sending stuff home, remind, to remind residents that it's very, very important to participate. In the census, again, you can do everything you can to get them to participate. But if they don't participate, then the survey isn't, I mean, the census really isn't worth that much. So we're going to uh, further pursue this. We're going to sit down and have a discussion with the council. I've given everybody the council, um, the program that, that they gave us, so for you to review. And we'll all get back to the later date and get together.
Good, thank you.
That pretty much covered.
That, that goes. And I would encourage everybody to go through this because I think the, our participation in twenty ten was kind of very low. And we just need to uh, do everything that we can to make sure that we're counted for twenty twenty.
Okay, and I think it, I, I think the, if the sound, census is done accurate, accurately and fairly. That, that could hinge or um, kind of work into your funding from the federal government. So it's very important to get everybody counted.
That's, that was one thing that was pointed out. Uh, any other?
Oh, back in here, yeah.
At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If, if there's any public comment, ask that you come, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay, Rick LaPiver, thirty six fifty five West Seventy Ninth Place, over there in fourth ward. Sixteen months ago, I came here complaining about speeding on my street. Chief Petrucci was at my house that night. They never installed a speed limit sign. Never put it up. Okay, there's that. But even if we put up a speed limit sign, how is it going to be enforced? I have speeders up and down that block, forty, fifty, sixty miles an hour, all the time, all hours of the day and night. And I'm like, now we have some new families on the block with small children that play out on the street. We need to get tacked up. I suspect this isn't legal, but let me ask you. You want to park one of your squad cars on my driveway? I'm more than, you can do that? Even if they're not, even if they can't run radar or laser or whatever they're running, we could just get them, just to sit there. So they never know when there's somebody there watching all the time. Mark one of the, all marked out ones. Don't think it, they won't know.
We had a lot of speeders on Seventy Eighth Avenue, which is, I think, a couple of blocks west of you.
That's north of me.
North of you.
Yeah, that's the road that goes.
Right there across from Broadwood.
Also, also.
And Chief Joe had a couple of policemen.
Had a hundred and seventy tickets with them.
Yes.
He wrecked a hundred and seventy there, none in front of my place.
What's your, what's your address again?
Thirty six fifty five West Seventy Ninth Place.
And uh, he said, he's been sitting out there right on Whitcomb, right on your block, and a hundred and seventy tickets in that bonded area, he's been doing a good job.
I will attest to that. I have seen him and I don't know how they missed your block. You are right adjacent to the old roller rink.
Right.
So what you're saying is they are speeding off of your block to Whitcomb.
Right, they use, what they do is, I've, I've watched them, so I know what they do. They're using it as a pass-through street to avoid the stoplight in front of the Speedway and the Lexus deal and all that. You know, so they come, and, and most of the time, I, if I'm out in front, they blow that stop sign down on Hendrick Street all the time. Nobody stops there, you know? But I know from all the years on the highway, thirty years in the trucking business, I know that people know that there's a stop sign. They know that's a through street. And they'll turn and come up there and they'll blast up there, you know, like, I'm like. I caught them. They, they see me standing out there, they're going, you better slow down a little bit, you know? But it's this, you know?
I'll get with Officer Book and make sure he gives special attention.
Alright. Okay, one uh, couple more things, maybe um. We have a lot of abandoned houses in the ward march, you know, unoccupied, abandoned. Got to keep an eye on some of that. Do we still have an ordinance officer?
Yes, we do. We have a code enforcement officer went for our area and went on the north end. Tiffany is in our area. I just called her yesterday because we've been having cars, which was reported to me by Lynn Parker. Cars are parking on the lawn instead of in their driveway and they have an empty driveway sitting there. And I have driven around and seen the abandoned houses. For as far as I know, some of them were sold on tax sales.
Okay.
If anything is going to be done within the near future, I can't say the element of time on that.
Here's what I'll say for that. All you got to do is give us the address and we'll look into it.
Right, yeah.
That's all, that's, that's what we can do.
There's one on, there's one on Hendricks doesn't even have a garage door.
Uh, you got to get this, I.
Yeah, I will.
Nobody's complained about it, otherwise we'd look, we'd have took care of that one a long time ago.
Right, it looks trashy.
You got, all you got to do is let us know.
Yeah, looks trashy.
Is that right around the corner from you?
Just, just, just uh, just north of Seventy Eighth on the east side of Hendrick's, second house, I think.
Hendrick's Place?
Hendrick Street and, you know, just, this is missing. The garage doors, they, they just covered it with plywood, left it bare plywood.
Get us the, get us the, get us the.
Okay, I'll get you the address. That's not a problem. Alright, okay. Uh, who do we talk to about Kaiser ditch?
My what?
Who do we talk to about Kaiser ditch?
Well, part of it belongs to the town, a little portion, and the rest belongs to the county.
It's Al Lake County. It's Al Lake County. It's Al Lake County regulated.
That needs to be cleaned.
Yeah, they did that maybe four years ago now. Um, so they probably won't be through there for a long while yet. They got about six or miles of regulated.
I have called Mr. Emerson, the surveyor. He's supposed to come out and do a cleanup. The last cleanup was done by George Van Till, our county surveyor. And he did a real good job that, no charge to the town at all.
Right.
So I don't know, maybe I have to contact Mr. Emerson again, but with the weather, the way it is now, what do you think, Matt?
Um, you know, I, I know they're, they're like on a ten to fifteen year cycle.
Hello, excuse me? We can talk about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright.
Thank you.
That's pretty much all I got. You know, I, I did, these are the things I see when I'm around the neighborhood and unfortunately, for now, I am around here all the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Announcement, ordinance appeals meeting October twenty fourth, twenty eighteen at six thirty. Abandoned Glided Properties Committee meeting October twenty fifth at ten thirty. Trick or treat hours October thirty first at five P M to seven P M. We will have uh, police officers out.
I'll be out personally. I will be trolling up your neighborhood and if you need extra bags of candy, just call me on the phone.
No, we don't need them. When I run out, I need to cut.
Well, I'm going to donate some bags of candy to your.
Are you doing the whole town?
I'll be out in about.
Okay.
Stormwater Board meeting November the seventh at four thirty P M. Plan Commission, November the seventh. Note those dates. It's not November the sixth, November the seventh because of election day at six thirty. You guys have something to show?
I don't know.
We got to, we got to figure out our, our hotel.
Oh, okay, yeah, alright, yeah.
We have a meeting at lunch, Mr. Sp, and I have a meeting at lunchtime about that tomorrow.
We'll let you guys work through that. Let us know. Let us know.
Big fun.
Uh. The town hall offices will be closed except for emergency services November the twelfth, twenty eighteen and Observance uh, Veterans Day. Our Veterans Day ceremony will be November the twelfth, twenty eighteen at eleven A M here at the town hall. This year's speaker is Pastor Robert Strop, Pentecostal South Lake Church. Everyone is invited. Please come to uh, our Veterans Day program. It's always a great time. We have the uh, choral teams from the high school. They come in and they give us a melody of songs and uh, our speakers are always great, so please stop in. Redevelopment Commission meeting, November thirteenth, twenty eighteen at six fifteen. Next town council meeting, November thirteenth, twenty eighteen at six thirty.
So moved. Adjourned. So moved.
So moved.
I knew we were waiting for that. Okay.
Thank you very much.